Call roll.
First.
Here.
Again.
Here.
Science.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Tripod.
Here.
Second, here, Gray.
Here.
Item two approval agenda. Any changes, Your Honor? No change. We'll do a approval. Second, call roll.
Again.
Yes.
Second. Sorry, science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Tripod.
Yes.
Second, yes, Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yes.
Item three, presentation positions and other communications. A, set up public hearing for January third, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. The city of Boone redistricting, redistricted, increased, uh, precinct, map option. Second, call roll.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yeah.
Tripod.
Yes.
Second, yes, Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
A, B, set up public hearing for January third, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Concerning progress, bill, budget, and status of the wastewater, land improvements, U D dissection project. Okay, overall.
Mormon.
Yes.
Tripod.
Yes.
Second, yes, Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yeah.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
C, set up public hearing for January third, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Consider an application for community developed block grant for broadband in the downtown area. So, second, call roll.
Tripod.
Yes.
Second, yes, Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Indeed, set up public hearing for January third, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Consider community development and housing to be assessed. I'm going, second, all roll.
Tripod.
Yes.
Second, yes, Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yes.
Again.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Item four, report a state, many say policy administration, you do, no report. And B, post AC season. There's no report and we want that. Uh, that's seven totally, you see. Okay, your packet, excuse me, it's a resolution regarding the, uh, US Water, uh, contract, City of Boone. And one is in your packet is the one that was finalized last week between staff and them. Thank you, sir. So staff was very good to negotiate contract, officially negotiate contract with US Water. They had done so, utility committee has reviewed the contract as well as legal. And as well as the presentation was a utility S E H cities engineer and well. I can tell you that one employee has, has chosen to transfer to an open position of the city, of the six. What the other ones are doing, it's really not my place to say here at council. Unless you have any questions, uh, I think for promotion to approve contracts. Second, all roll.
Second, no. Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
No.
Mormon.
Yes.
Tripod.
Yes.
Okay, item, uh, that's approved, decision of work system for the, uh. Thank you, sir. So, uh, in previous utility committee meeting, staff has talked with, uh, them about possibly adding a position at public works. The reason for this was we have well over a hundred stop losses that are world, as well as if you remember our I N I program, which is removing storm water out of the storm sewer. And we're in phase three currently. Part of that program is to install collector lines as well. Uh, public works has had challenges getting some of those done of being able, not being able to get a contractor to do them or having time. So that is an issue as well. So there's too many things I think justify this position. Uh, we just, uh, had budget meeting this week, uh, with J R and Wayne and myself and Andrea. And we, we looked at the budget to see if we could budget for this position that we can, uh, within the revenue that we have coming in. It was taken to committee for approval to move forward to council. That's where we are tonight. So I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve that additional position for public works.
Just start me on the position?
I'm sorry.
Or just start me?
We would have to advertise. So with, with, with the US Water, uh, thing as well, we have one employee that's asked to transfer. So he, that transfer take effect on March first. We still have, that would be the kind of organizer would be the new position. Uh, we have a position that J R has left open since, uh, September until we, we decide what we, what we do with US Water. So, uh, J R would advertise right away. Okay, well, uh, maybe get recommend, uh, proving this position. Okay, all roll.
Second, yes, Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yeah.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Tripod.
Yes.
So, I don't, all, again, Gray. Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with you. Is, uh, how speaking thing regarding the arts commission. As you know, last meeting decided that we should put it on hold until the elected officials are seated. And figure out the terms that are assigned on arts commission and where they go from there. As part of that, we are also doing this because otherwise it's a whole another forty-five days. Past January to fix anything if we want to. If we don't do this now, then the time just resets. So all we're doing is this, is this is the first reading and then it's going to go through the process of January while the U C meeting and the elected official is discuss it and then that way everything's ready to go. I'll open any questions.
Just the reason. The change to identify the board from current situation.
Um, some of the authority and duties and as part of the discussion process for the elected officials. And some issues that were raised during the process this year.
What issues?
So first issue was dealing with authority and conflicting power of the city departments. It was conflicting reports or request for services without one of the proper channels. There was additional services requested, not approved until after the fact. It was the permit issue, the liquor license. There was constant things that need to fix as part of the process identified, solved it. All we're doing is this, starting the process now. So we don't delay the process next year. If council decides at that time they don't want to do it, they're always able to change that. This is the first reading of three. But if we wait now and it's just going to push it back forward, or further back, and I do not think that's the right decision at this time. Open any other questions?
So, uh, what is the new role then of the, would the new role be of this advisory board?
That would be something that'd be fully discussed, but we can't change the current guidelines without going through the three step process. So while that three step process is happening, those things can be finalized. If we don't do that, we have the discussion then started, it's probably March, April before the arts commission.
Is the application process for the members the same?
Same application form of what?
So the people who have already applied, will still be considered?
Well, if anyone applies for that, they would be applied for the new seating of the new arts mission, but the new members do not be seated, so they like officials decide others. So what the final format is, what these like officials decide around the table, when that happens in January, the application will be considered and then it'll be voted on and, just like, just like the current process. But we can't do that until we know the formal processes and we can't change anything in the arts mission in our current code about going through the three meetings. And if we wait till January, which I know may always concern, but twenty thirty days, we may wait in close to sixty days. If we didn't do this, if we waited till January to start the process.
It, it just isn't unnecessary to change from what's already there. The new members will be here. The issues that you stated for first Thursday, related issues, which I noted at the last meeting. It was all, they were all a timing situation.
First Thursday, so it won't even be an issue because that's going to be handled by another group now.
First Thursday, anything else?
As we move forward, C V V will be taking over the green space. They will be in charge of this.
So my contact would be just part of our C V V contact. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, will the appointing of members to this board still be the mayor's appointment? Gradified by the cap.
Yes.
Will the city be refunding our membership fees that people pay?
How much we talking?
Uh, twenty dollars times forty-five people. And then other donations that came in.
Yeah, we need to.
And as long as it can be verified by the records here.
Right.
Valleys.
Yeah.
All that, so if they come in and they wish to have it refunded.
Yeah, we have the records.
I would want to look into that. I would have some concerns if they've been members and we, and they donate money to those sports events, those types of things. Uh, we can look at that. So my preference would be is that if that becomes addition, then we hope to see exactly when those ones are seen and what they will remark for these things. How long they work, number of all this.
Membership, uh, process, each one in June. So none of them will be members for more than six months. I mean, they were all guaranteed that membership through twenty-three.
And all current members will be honored for that process as well. So there'll be no change and, and no issues to figure, continue members of the arts.
Yeah.
Just, just to be clear, we're not getting rid of it. This is all part of the format process, fixing issues we've identified before. So come twenty twenty-two, the process will continue.
It still doesn't make a lot of sense that if you're. If the players involved with first Thursday are no longer participating, then what's, definitely issues you stated for first Thursday's issues?
No, the, the first Thursday members, if they were participants, they're still on this day. The mayor's referring to is the C V V contract with the Green Space. And part of our issues with the Green Space this past year, as you all know, was, was coordinating with the farmers market, the request for waivers of the Green Space for operations, the toilet facilities, fencing and everything else, which state will now coordinate as part of the contract. So first Thursday is going to happen. If you vomit your first Thursday, you can still vomit your first Thursday. If the chamber still wants to participate, they can still participate as partners. The C V V is part of our contract on tonight's agenda with the Green Space is going to be the point of contact. So we're not just law buying anybody participating and they wish to partner with us, but the C V V.
Well, I had expressed my concern, I think, back in July. Maybe August, about the confusion of what was the chamber and what was the arts council. It seemed like the first Thursday's event was a chamber event, was about, focused on downtown businesses and the success of downtown businesses. It was a beer tent. And there only benefited one arts organization the entire time, this six times that it happened. And yet, my understanding at that time, when I asked, was that the arts council actually paid for the bands. So I'm, I'm one hundred percent for reassessing all of that. I just wanted to say, it was already confusing. I attended two meetings and it was incredibly confusing at what the arts council really was. It looked more like a political tool rather than promoting the arts in our community.
Roll.
Just to clarify, the arts commission partnered with the chamber, downtown businesses, and the farmers market, coordinated first Thursday. The arts commission has no part in the alcohol licenses. The chamber handled it, did, uh, permits for that and the insurance. We scheduled the bands and the entertainment. We also scheduled and partnered with the downtown businesses for the family night, which is quite kid oriented. So our, our goal was in the music artistic part of the program. The farmers market handled all the vendors. And did find out when they're working to grow that market. The most important thing that we accomplished is that we were able to bring in all the downtown businesses or retailers as partners. That's what we need to, that's what we would like to see moving forward, is that we brought that partnership so that first Thursday are a greater benefit to the downtown businesses. And then I have one other question. So is the C V V being asked to pay the sixteen hundred dollars for the year that this arts commission was asked to pay at the beginning of the season in order to use the green space?
You asked about the sixteen hundred dollars. Was the arts admission paid or paying that original request?
That's what you asked us to pay and you guys agreed to waive it for this first year.
Correct.
And then we were going to be negotiating that amount again this year, but you had stated that there was no way that fee would be waived because of the maintenance costs for that, for that, uh, union space.
No, what, part of the other discussions we also had was the use of the four those down there that was being paid for out of the Green Space Committee funding instead of other funding. There was the revenue being generated from the vendor fees to the chamber who was reporting and covering their liability insurance. There was the additional thing of the fencing and additional cost incurred of that. So all these things that we are still working through are still going to be happening and discussing in January. We waived it this year, yes, but no, at no time was anything shut down for next year moving forward because we understood that this was the first year with things that needed fixed and we are fixing those things. And, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. Item number two, C V V, discussion of Green Space agreement. Um, we, I wrote at our last meeting on this, uh, earlier this year, you approached the chamber about this similar agreement. There was no interest at that time. With the Green Space community being dissolved formally with the meeting of two official members and then forecalling under E E, it was decided to take this burden on E E and staff that needed to look at a formal agreement to run Green Space to merely see increased fees. So we approach C V V to do it and give out board proposal for us on the pass on the bill.
So the agreement, uh, that was approved by C V V incoming to council for approval and sent to.
And we have Chris Roger here, we said to director C V V for any questions as well, so.
I'd just like to say thank you to the council, the mayor for, um, entrusting in us and taking care of that space and, um, we just, we're looking forward to it and putting together a committee to make it bigger and better for this next year.
This is not an action item, this is a session that's later on.
The agreement for approval to this.
Um, and third, final item under E E, discuss items. If you all remember, uh, my agreement that you're referring to is the development agreement to the article property that we started three years ago. They asked for one extension due to COVID, uh, requirements. It was granted. They asked for another extension due to weather as well. Um, that ends December third first. And E E met earlier tonight and decided at that time there was no interest to afford another extension, but to enforce the agreement as is. So we directed staff to move forward with, uh, any and all options that we should discuss, uh, city attorney, uh, Robbins and city administrator Scare. And they will work closely together on this and many, many meetings, probably to figure this out and move forward with it, but the key thing is always always is to get that development video hold on there. That's all.
Okay, department reports, uh, vote with us. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, one can counsel update on our district map for our wards. Um, we do this every ten years, concurrent with the new census. We've been working with the county, who the county, the boss, our partner, really, um, agreed to, uh, redo our maps or if we met with the, I don't know, or met with, uh, any, about the AM, uh, Patrick, three or four weeks ago. Uh, they went through some different options and this is the best option we came up with. Very little movement. The map you have in front of you. It went up on the board there on the screen. There's a dash line, if you look particularly distant port, uh, that moves by a block, the line moves about approximately one block. It's very, very minimal. Um, none of the districts change or any council members, they will all be in the same, same distance. Uh, none of that will change. And if you look at it on the back page, it means, uh, at the bottom of the page, it shows you the total, it shows you the population number in each one of those districts. By state law, we're allowed up to a twenty percent variation, um, from, from one ward, one district to another and or under two percent. Changes that will be more well within that realm. We have you, we're releasing, I, um, set up public hearing for January third. We hope to have the first reading in order from the third, uh, about public hearing. Um, and then we'll do the final, we'll have the final meeting in January and we'll do the best we can to, 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 and adopt and settle those implications, just like for your sake. I'll enter any questions.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Uh, finance officer, correct. Uh, city attorney Jim.
Thank you. And the consent agenda is a resolution to participate in the opioid settlement that has been reached by, uh, all of the states, uh, about twenty-eight million dollars that the year mark, how it gets divided, we just need to determine. We, uh, we have participation in that. It needs to be used for education, uh, prevention and those kinds of, maybe all kinds of different options are set forth in that, uh, agreement. So I can't tell you exactly how it's all going to shake out, but the more, uh, parties that participate, the more the state of Iowa will receive. So, so, uh, hopefully we should participate in it. Would that happen to be heard?
Uh, director of public works, John House.
Yes, Your Honor, got the things. Um, in the consent agenda, we have payment for South Marshall Street, the overlay. It's not quite complete. Most is done. Um, we can reduce it, thirty thousand dollars from the pay request because it has some big damages. Uh, we're working that out, but it is, for the most part, done and parity has each, uh, approved this period of those. Um, the next thing is erosion control on the slant hill. Um, it looks great. I'm going to get down, put down by it. It's really, really good. We got some bids for, uh, repaying for erosion control. Pretty high. Um, one's like forty-seven thousand, the other thirty-eight thousand. That's for seating socks, silk fence, and they have these paved blankets that they put down the whole entire thing. That's where it's really expensive. Um, we had a couple of companies give us bids. One company, no reconstructions, so that's the only other way they would do it. Um, but the other one, lawn services, Keith McDonald, gave us a bid of, as, as, uh, not the Cadillac, but the nice step down for ninety thousand dollars. It is actually, you got the packet there, eight thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars. That's to do everything except for the A blankets. And then it's a, and it's also for reseating in the spring. So if we get a big washout, something like that, it would hit the beginning of the spring. If it was a golf or something really nice, I would say absolutely the blankets, everything. And, uh, we will, we're not going to open it until next year. So if, if it, if something happens, we can fix it by the time we actually. So I'm going to recommend eight thousand dollar one. The park commission went to the, they really wanted the, the three thousand dollar one. But, uh, episode discussion being landers, we probably think this is wrapping up. And if something happens, we can address it before we open it next year. Uh, so I don't know, any emotion or, yes. This is going to be just part of the, the demo project that we're wrapping up. So, so you disagree with my, if someone do it or? No, it would be through, um, lawn services, Keith McDonald. Thirty-four thousand five hundred seventy, staff that we use around, it was done. It would be part of the, uh, demo project.
Good motion.
Yes, please.
Looking to group, estimate number two.
Second. All roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Her.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Tripod.
Yes.
Second. Yes.
With weather being, you know, we did our ninety-two, but we don't get, so, that's good. And there's also a couple of bids, ones for the old fairway site, six twenty-eight stories three. Um, that was sort of sixty-one hundred bucks and for the airport, which is going on, you know, that, that might setting, we had someone with an idea to go over them. Okay. Uh, the last thing is, I know I talked with Phil and Phil said one of your goals, so to speak, for next year is scumps in public right away. Uh, we just got done, uh, doing fifty-nine of them for a hundred and seventy dollars, five dollars a, uh, pot. Which is a pretty good price. Um, we got like over five hundred and fifty. So it's going to take a little while to get there. It'll be budgeted ten thousand dollars a year to do it and so instead of taking one. So, uh, we're, we're doing it, we're doing for that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, we can recommend you do the airport.
That is, uh.
We can certainly add that council's old choose. Uh, what, what was that bid? Airport bid was two grand, two thousand and five hundred dollars. So about three grand. So you had nine, about twelve grand total. We certainly can do that, council choose. Again, it'll be part of the demo project.
I don't like to give it down to.
Yeah.
Just so it's done and off late, it's not from a bad, uh, budget matter.
You want to serve motion on that?
Just before, uh, just before we get to move on from this, what's the old fairway site?
Six twenty-four.
Yeah, is that, we need to talk about that at all?
I think, I think we should delay that until after the bond vote or.
I think we just. I just want.
Because we will have some erosion control along the alley and around the feeding table.
The feeling is, why spend money to put grass in when the bond vote passes, then we're not going to care about it.
I know we're going to take care of that.
Yeah, this, this.
So that's, alright.
Thank you.
As far as their contract, they just have a good.
Okay, no report on the range here. Public safety chief out.
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, chief legal. I have no report. Oh, sorry. Uh, city administrator Bill.
Thanks, sir. First item is discuss the special election for March first. Uh, in front of you, you see the resolution twenty-nine fifty-one, this needs to be passed, uh, to direct the, uh, county to have a special election on March first for the wellness center. The, uh, bond language that we talked about, last council meeting is on there up there in, in a bold black as well as the rest of that. In discussions with the auditor's office, there'll be just one location for the votes and that'll be at the community building for March first. So this, I believe, is the consent agenda. So I do not need to go on at that time. My second item is, I covered a little bit in, um, goal setting. I'm working with concept works to help us prepare for the bond, uh, is. The agreement is as needed. I can see fifteen thousand dollars. So there's no contract. I do not need to approve. This is money I've budgeted. This is more of an informational thing for you. And if there's any questions you have, I can answer them. My third item is an local contract. This has been reviewed by legal, it's been reviewed by, uh, yeah, not a development person, myself. And it's in the consent agenda as well. And this, this is an agreement with De novo if the bond passes March first to design and handle the construction of the wellness center. In addition, phase, so that'd be phase two. Phase one is coming up with some concepts, uh, conceptual drawings and I think a visual tour at some point. We have a meeting coming up. I'll agree to announce legally today.
Yeah, we're, uh.
For the first will be Jan.
Wellness center community.
Will be thirty, January first. Okay. So those drawings, everything to get us the election, it costs us fifteen thousand dollars to De novo and, uh, that is budgeted as well and in. So that will not be part of the agreement in the poll. And, and as I said, we'll, we'll pay that as it comes in. Again, that's in the consent agenda. Again, that's in the consent agenda. Uh, the only other thing I have is just to refine, uh, we have several meetings coming up here in January. Remember January fourth, the hotel, hotel meeting. January four eleventh is the first budget meeting at six o'clock and if necessary, uh, a second budget meeting on January ninth. Under everything, uh. Okay. Sorry. Uh, yeah, we've been working on the school road. Uh, we had a meeting with the school, uh, council, pick up on myself. We believe, I thought that they, uh, care about this. We have, uh, I think, a tentative agreement subject to, um, approval of council. I'm still working on it and I'll be bringing that on January third for your approval.
And we'll just say that the discussions of the school district have been very good and they've been very well in partnership with us trying to figure this out. Make sure everything happens the way we all need it to happen on the school buildings, can go. So that's a lot of progress and a lot of good things happening.
That's all, actually. Okay. Number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you'd like to remove and discuss separately? If not, any motion to approve. So move. Hold on.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Chipper?
Yes.
Sucker? Right?
Yes. Okay, number seven, ordinance is per three, ordinance twenty two seventy two to I C D Blue Isle. Change the parking regulations around Laurel Park by making chapter, chapter sixty nine, section sixty nine, one zero eight. So, second, call girl.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Chipper?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes. Right?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes. B, first reading ordinance twenty two seventy three to resolve Boone City Arts Commission in its current form and replace in different entities, chapter thirty three. Second, hold on.
Science?
No.
Mormon?
Yes.
Chipper?
Yes.
Sucker? No. Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes. Then number eight, uh, I have no comments. Speaking, I do have a couple appreciation plaques I would like to hand out to Greg and Holly. For their time serving on the city council. Holly served four years on the city council. I want to thank her. It's not easy to serve as a public official. I think they're based on that. We're present this evening. Thank you for, for leaving that. Thank you.
Greg's been here twelve years. Pretty well known. He's done a great job. I want to thank him for he does well. It's not been easy and he's been a big voice on social media. He's kept our community informed and he's done a great job. Thank you.
All right, uh, councilor comments. I had a couple items for you, Your Honor. Uh, John and I met with. All the specifications I had down in twenty eight. Um, they did get all the full stone street passing laws. The areas. Um, they still have some erosion control to do and, uh, getting off the rebar. And sweeping the parking lots for that, so we'll get those done very soon. Um, they did go a little bit about level beyond because they filled that space up all the way up to level with the sidewalk. So we don't have to put up fences. That'd be nice if they don't have to maintain those, worry about those. The gravel piles are gone. Huge undertaking by staff, so we appreciate their efforts with that. Um, they conducted by gravel for several years.
Do you know how much was there?
Obviously by two hundred and twenty, uh, times, two hundred and twenty truckloads, man.
Two hundred and twenty truckloads?
Yes. It, I couldn't remember that. It was a massive amount. The reason why stockpile was, they wanted to know how much there was there. There was seven, they, no, no. Seven twenty, twenty foot high. There's a lot. Um, we're going to discuss this, but the rec center meeting will be held, uh, Thursday, January thirteenth. At seven P M. in City Hall Auditorium, we're going to be introducing the design team, sharing their preliminary design and concepts. Listening to the input of citizens and preparing for final design and answering any questions. Um, we'll also be introducing the new rec center committee members. And our plan is to share as much information as possible with the public in the next several weeks.
Carrie, I was just going to ask you, that looks like there's a wall that's still.
Yes, that they, and we left a retaining wall in there because of the elevation change. Um, we didn't want that entire project to shift down towards the historical site, which could very well happen. So we left that retaining wall in there and we're receiving our credit for that. Um, and then there's also some, uh, footing issues up on the, on the north side. They left the footings in the tunnel, right? They left the footings in the tunnel there. There's a issue. They'll be getting credit for that as well. So that will be incorporated into the next project.
Any other council comments? A quick reminder, December thirtieth, I think we decided there was a progress for these, sorry, um. Everyone is welcome to attend. And him? Are there any public comments, friends? Yes?
I have a question. I wonder if you could clarify about concept projects?
Sure, but that's a company out of the metro area helps cities when they have bond issues. Uh, to get them, kind of help them step them through the process of getting it to a role, to get, uh, to get the proper information out and correct information.
Are they free marketing?
I'm sorry?
Are they free marketing as such?
That would be some of, they'll work with the, the yes committee on it, yes.
And where does that fifteen thousand dollars come from?
I have it, uh, budgeted in the economic development budget.
Any other public comments? That's the city manager.